Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask, is there anyone else recording this meeting in the audience? Seeing none, if you join me for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, limited, just for all.
Good evening, everyone. Are there any citizens comments this evening? Seeing none. Do we have any special recognitions this evening?
We do, Mr. Chair. I wanted to make the committee aware that I was recently notified that Matthew Healy, he's a class of 2015, he was the recipient of a $1,000 scholarship. I happened to be at the high school one day and heard it announced over the intercom. And that was part of WPI. He is a part of the math team and he was the top scorer. So I wanted to give Matthew his due recognition for a job very well done.
Excellent. And I don't see any student representatives this evening.
I will through the chair announce that Taylor Folk Rider is on the girls' field hockey team and they just won their first game in the finals, two to one. I just got a text from Coach Dunne here. So she's there and John explained he will be late coming to the meeting.
Awesome.
Okay, excellent. Congratulations to them. I would now seek approval for the minutes of October 15th, 2014.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes of October 15th, 2014.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's a vote. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item I shared with you actually at the last meeting, some exciting news, that Ms. Palmer, who was our graphic arts teacher at the high school, with a collaboration with a gentleman from the community, a business owner, they had actually engaged in a contest to come up with a logo. So what you have in your packet are the finalist logos and who we have here tonight are Caitlin Chesna as well as Kyle Fena. Theirs were the ones that were selected. So I'm going to, with your permission, turn it over to Ms. Palmer and our winning student representatives.
Sounds great. Thank you.
I'm going to actually hand out a new packet for you guys.
Watch your step there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I did out all of these as the kids go through their presentation.
Thank you.
That way you guys have a visual as well as an auditorium.
That's good.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
So if you don't mind, I'm going to plug in this also.
Sure.
So, um, as Dr. Dino has said, Bill Malinay back in May of this year emailed me directly and proposed this project to, um, to a school saying that he not only needed a logo design, but he also needed a full web design overhaul photography services and animation services and wanted to use Auburn High School as, um, as the starting point. And he actually wanted to use the school for all services. Unfortunately, we do not offer photography class, animation class, or advanced web design classes far enough to provide the rest of the services. So I think he is going to use Millbury High School for the rest of the services. So for, with that being said, we were, I was more than happy to have my advanced class, my graphics three-four class take on this logo design project. And so the design itself, the project took about three and a half weeks from the initial research to the final design presentation to Mr. Malinay in which he came into the classroom to judge the designs and get the students feedback on what he wanted. And his business is non-metallic solutions. The, um, this was actually a hard industry to, for them to research, which we'll talk about in a little bit. They produce tanks to mix pharmaceutical waste and chemicals in for companies such as American Pfizer. So this logo is going to go on an international, internationally used website. So, um, and when he uploads the logo, it's going to say the students' names and the fact that it was designed by Auburn High School students. So, um, there, there were, um, this class is a class of about 17 students. Oh, it's, it's not on. Okay. Um, sorry. Um, it's a class of about 17 students.
Through the chair, do you see it on the screen?
Yeah, I do see it.
Okay, I can help you.
Sorry.
That's quite all right. I didn't know if you had a.
On. There we go. All right. Excellent. Thank you. Sorry, I have a different projector at my classroom. I just don't have a remote though. So this class is about 17 students. We broke them down into teams. They could choose their own partners, um, mostly seniors. I do have a couple of juniors. The final present, uh, designs were presented to Bill actually twice. The first round, he wanted some adjustments. So in the end, we actually have, um, I am showing you their final designs from the other teams, um, good mix of male and female students. They all had very different ideas. There are very certain restrictions that the students were going to talk about. And we had first, second, and third place winners. The prizes were Visa gift cards of various amounts. And Bill Malinay was also kind enough to provide the students lunch one day for a business meeting and also going to give them T-shirts with all of their logos on them as well. And the feedback we've gotten from colleges so far has been positive that this is a great portfolio project for them scholarship wise as well. And the top prize, which Kyle and Caitlin are about to get into, their logo is going to be displayed on his website, his flag, his sign, business cards, and anything that he would use to print or be displayed on, on his website. So you guys can take over and this is their weapon design. We're going to talk about their design and their process.
Hello, I'm Kyle. So when we first started this, when I first heard about this project, I got really excited just because when I'm older, I want to go into the graphic design business actually and also go into the marketing business. So this was a really good opportunity for me to get like the business aspect of this graphic design. So when we first heard about this project, Ms. Palmer told us that we had to research the company first. So we went on his website and found out that it was like plastic tanks and like these fabrication tanks and all that, which we got a little bit nervous just because it's a really hard topic to like make into a logo. So we did a lot of research. We looked at his old logo and so.
What's with his competitors' logos and the people that he worked with to try to compare what we can make from all of those to make something similar?
Yeah. So his old logo also had the arrows that we incorporated, but we just like twisted it up a little bit and made it a little bit better. But, um, so after that process, he actually came in and told us what he wanted. He wanted to stick with the colors, which are the white going into, um, the blue going into the white and then going into the white and blue together, the gradient of the white and the blue.
It symbolizes his company and the way that he takes tanks and the fabrications and puts them together.
So we came up with a couple of different designs and the next page is our sketches that we did. And this just kind of shows you the design process that we went through. We had like a lot of different sketches at first, so.
Once we did the, um, the interview with him and he told us everything that he wanted, we did some sketches and we decided what our top choices were. We actually emailed them to him to ask what his opinion was on the sketches and he chose the one that he liked and we started working with that and as well as doing a couple web sketches before starting on the final one.
Yeah, so the first one we came up with was the bottom one and we, he wanted to incorporate those three arrows still. So what we did was we built like three arrows inside of each other and still used the dark blue, the white, and the gradient. And we also combined the letters, the NMS, so it looked like, was like a continuation of the arrow. So it looked like it spelled NMS and then came out as the arrow. And this was the one we were actually initially going to go for, for our actual design. And, but then we sent him this one and then.
And the circle one on the top right.
Yeah, the circle one on the top right. And he liked the circle one on the top right better just because it incorporates like the circle going in like a cycle and like the reuse of the fabrication and the plastic tank. And so we went like, so we went with that one and when we presented it to him the first time, we used that one. And he really liked it, but he had like a few alterations that he wanted. Like he didn't like the yellow outline on NMS and he didn't like how the letters were together and he wanted like a specific font. So we changed that and we got rid of the yellow and also he said the words which go along the white arrow, which is his saying, which I actually can't read right now.
Yeah.
But.
Economic innovation.
That's why, yeah, that's why he didn't want it is because he couldn't read it, so.
Yeah. And he also didn't like the yellow or the, um, the black writing really because he wanted, because it's, um, his company kind of symbolizes like purity and like sterilization and everything. He wanted it to look really clean and very professional. So we took out the yellow.
And we did put the yellow in just because he also has this promotional deal kind of where when he goes to conventions, he gives out yellow lanyards and he gives them to his, um, the people that come to his booth. And then if they, I think if they like come back with it or if they look on the back of their lanyard, there's like a number and then he hides the number somewhere in his, um, uh, website and then the person with the number wins like an iPad. So we thought that was like an important like marketing thing he does, so that's why we wanted, and they were yellow lanyards, so that's why we incorporated the yellow.
It also contrasts the blue, which makes the blue stand out more. So we decided that that would make his logo more eye catching, which is another thing that he wanted. We'll go back to that.
All right, so in the end, we showed him two designs and since he didn't like the yellow on the bottom right-hand corner, that was the one we showed him that we really wanted or in the middle one. So the middle one was going to be the sign that went on the, uh, on the side of his building while the other one was going to be on like a business card. Uh, so we showed him those two and then we showed him actually the winning logo, which is at the top. And we were just like showing him like a random one that he could put like on a shirt or something. And we didn't think he was going to pick that one, but in the end, he ended up picking that one, which we were kind of surprised by.
Yeah, that was actually just a one that we were playing around with while we were touching up, um, our logo after he came in the first time and purchased it.
So that's our logo and in the end, I thought this was like a really good experience, especially for me, since I didn't want to go into this, you showing like the business aspect and how to work with like a business partner and like the marketing aspect of the graphic design business, so.
Excellent. Is that all that you had for us?
Yep.
If you want to just stay up there for a second and we'll ask around if anyone has any questions or comments.
Through the chair. I just want to say how impressed I am with all of this and I'm just wondering, how long of a process was this?
It took about like two and a half weeks, like with like the design process and like the sketching and all that, so all that and like the, yeah, so like two and a half weeks.
So it wasn't enough.
Yeah.
It would have taken a lot longer if I would have.
Did you go home thinking about it at night? Yes. Well, congratulations.
A lot of late nights staying after with me too.
Actually, over the weekend is when I, um, I came up with the idea for the, the circles. I actually saw a picture of something else that reminded me of it and it ended up working.
Nice. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, through the chair. She didn't say her name. Can you state your name too?
I'm sorry, I'm Caitlin.
Just so you get the recognition, okay. Yeah, you guys did a great job. I hope other businesses will catch on to this idea and use, you know, high schoolers are a great resource. You guys have innovative ideas, so I think it was a very smart move on this company's part. So good job.
We did, um, I did send Bill a survey along with several other business owners that have interest in asking what, um, they were looking for and what they would like to use us for in the future. And he's going to pass that around and see what we can add to the program as well.
That's great. Yeah, we need photography.
Any other comments?
Just a good job and hope you keep it up and keep it going.
I would just.
Good luck.
I would echo the sentiments of the rest of the board. Excellent job. Caitlin, do you have an interest in pursuing?
Uh, it's not my main interest, but I am considering doing it as a minor and definitely as a hobby, if not the minor. But it did give me a lot of experience in what it would be like if I did pursue this and it was definitely enjoyable.
It's obvious that you guys were passionate about it and also obvious that you're very proud of it and you should be. It was a great job and I agree that if we could get this out to some of the businesses and now that we've got a great reference from this company, maybe we could solicit some donations and get more students involved because I think it's a great thing. And I love all the designs. There weren't too many of them in there, including the sketches that I didn't like. I wish I was that creative. Thanks for coming in tonight. You guys did a great job, very professional.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you all around.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next, we have Mrs. King here, who is going to give a brief update regarding food services, but hopefully people also got an opportunity to taste from the breakfast showcase. I want to thank Mrs. Mallert and Mrs. Garcia for being here and serving us some tasty treats tonight. So I will turn it over to Mrs. King.
Yeah. Janice is along the bottom.
What's that? Is it on the bottom?
See the P?
P.
Nope.
Nope.
Can you go up? Did you put it on? No. Did I? I did.
Again, it's a pleasure to be here this evening to share some of the continued efforts that we're working on highlighting our school nutrition programs here at Auburn Public Schools. And we went to, you know, make the connection to how school nutrition programs, especially school breakfast, are really connected to learning. Our breakfast initiatives are continuing as one of our primary priorities for the school year 2015, I mean, 2014, 15. And our goals really are to provide all of our students with access to school breakfast and so that they have a nutritious breakfast every day and also to share information with our students and families and our administration community about the critical role that school breakfast can play in learning and health. Now, we want to increase our participation in all areas so that we can really improve our student, um, performance and also to increase our funding for our school nutrition programs. In Auburn, I'm going to provide you some of our school nutrition statistics. Currently, about forty percent of, a little bit under forty percent of our students that are in our income eligible categories of free and reduced take advantage of our breakfast program. So we were looking at how we can actually improve that and our national, nationwide statistics that we compare ourselves to, the fact that many low-income students nationwide are actually, it's around fifty percent of students actually participate in breakfast programs. So we're, we have some room for growth in that area. We also want to expand, we wanted to expand our breakfast participation. This year, we actually added Pack-a-Chog and we added the high school in our breakfast program. We had currently, prior to that, had been serving four of our schools. And we feel that expanding our breakfast program will help to bridge the nutrition gap for all of our children, that we can especially address income, our low-income households, but also all of our students. We also feel that we can improve the availability of funding in the households to meet other expenses if we're getting more of our children to actually consume breakfast at school. And also if students participate in breakfast, it qualifies, or the free and reduced program rather, it qualifies all of our households that qualify for a variety of the safety net programs. And we want to look to build our, a stronger community as well. So we were on a mission. We wanted to figure out how we can actually increase our participation and one of the programs that I had initiated this fall was called Breakfast to Go. And we really feel that it's a really timely program because there is a lack of time in the household in the morning to prepare or to eat breakfast at home. And at many times, in many cases, there are limited financial resources that exist in the home. And also, we want to provide options to support variable arrival time at school. If buses were late and if kids were, you know, running fast to get to the school, that we had another opportunity for them. We also wanted to complement class, current classroom schedules and routines by providing partnerships with our school principals so that students could actually, if they came in to the school five days before classes started, that they could take a breakfast to go to the classroom. So we're not actually officially doing a breakfast in the classroom program, but if students have that option, which is wonderful. And also, there may be some limited timeframes based on schedules in each school for students to actually be able to eat a traditional breakfast. So we embarked on our mission this year. Our theme for school breakfast is wild about breakfast because we think that there's a lot of opportunity for students to participate in breakfast. And I wanted to bring in, you know, some of our staff from Julian Bancroft, but I'm going to highlight our participation figures that we have for the month of September. We have, out of all the students actually are qualifying for free meals, twenty percent are participating in the month of September. Here, for our reduced students, seven percent. I combined the total to get twenty-seven percent. And then continuing forward for a free percentage of participation in October, in Brim Mars, twenty-nine percent. Zero percent of our reduced students were participating, but overall combined total of twenty-nine percent. As you can see in the orange blocks, there's increased participation in all of our schools. But I want to especially highlight my staff, my wonderful staff at Julian Bancroft and I brought them here this evening. Can you come up? Because they, as you can see, have achieved the highest level percentage of participation in our reduced and free categories at sixty-one percent. So sixty-one percent of the kids that are coming to school every day that qualify for free and reduced meals participate in the breakfast program. And I just wanted to share a few of the things that they're doing. They don't really want to say it, but what they're doing is actually they're really reaching out to our students as they come into school every day. They're going out to meet the buses, so to speak, in the front of the, the school. They're encouraging kids at breakfast or lunchtime to participate in the breakfast program. I think they're just doing an amazing job. And I want to thank them both publicly for their great work. Catherine Ledger.
Thank you.
And Debbie Mallert. Yes. So I just really appreciate all that you're doing to make breakfast a reality for our students because I think it will make a huge difference in their academic outcome and their health.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts. So we were looking at, you know, how can we promote school breakfast? We feel that school breakfast, you know, can be in any date park type of a meal for students. We have, um, they could, student could actually consume it entirely for breakfast. They could purchase this meal to go as a mid-morning snack or they could actually select it for an after-school snack or look at it as a way to energize before, after school activities, sporting events, et cetera. But bringing home a snack for a study break or looking at it for an anytime break snack, we thought it was a really beneficial opportunity. We actually had an opportunity to present this evening, um, some of the meal choices that we're actually providing to our students. The student actually is provided with a bag and the students select their breakfast. Three components in the breakfast bag, so it's very individualized and we're trying to meet a variety of food preferences. So we want to, to share that. Also, school breakfast is really, really important for energy, to support physical activity, to support all the other things that students and children do on a regular basis because it's just very, very important. And it just really is a sure reminder of why childhood nutrition is so important. We're really shaping the, the future of our country and our community by often amazing things that we can do with children, children's food. So let's see the questions regarding school breakfast that you might have.
So when you're, and this might actually be to the ladies from JV, when you're, when you are kind of going out to the buses, where are you actually serving the kids? Are you, is, are you, do you have a table set up kind of close to where you can catch them on the way in or do they have to go all the way into the cafeteria? I'm just wondering how accessible it is for them.
It's in the cafeteria. We have developed a sign that we can put outside the door and, um, first few days we'd go out there and try to encourage them to come in. But now that they have a visual with the sign when they're getting off the buses, they see it and reminds them for them to come in. We've noticed that a couple of days when it was rainy, the sign wasn't put out and we had lower percentage rate than what we would have normally had. Today, we did fifty children. Halloween, we did thirty-three. Of course, they were all excited about Halloween, so they did want to take the time to come in for breakfast.
I think it's fantastic. I think it's great, so.
I have, I have one question about the breakfast. How about on delayed openings? Is it still available to the students? It will be, yes. Okay. Excellent. And a student can even purchase this as a meal that they can take. At lunchtime, we were just telling you today, you know, how we can continue to provide that outreach for a child to purchase this for any other possible time frame of the day.
And then they can have it for a snack or can they eat it at recess or lunch as well, anytime during the day?
This is a wonderful aspect of this program is that everything is shelf-stable. So it allows the student, we refrigerate the juice and milk just for food preferencing in the morning, but a child is able to put that in their backpack or have it as a mid-morning snack in the classroom or they can have it, you know, anytime of the day.
Excellent.
So we'll be reporting back on our, our numbers monthly just to give you a little bit of an idea, probably through email as well. I also wanted to provide you a little bit of an update on our school life participation. When I was here just a, you know, a short time ago, we were talking about, you know, where our numbers were running. And I just wanted to share with you our September and our October figures. As you can see, our numbers are growing during the month of October. We did, you know, some review of that and we also looked at where we were with our free and reduced numbers from, from May this year. And we're topping off right now. We're in the seventy percent category and up for our free and reduced numbers for, for lunch for the month of October. So we're really excited about, you know, looking at that. And then I looked at the growth rate from May 2014 to October 2014 and our numbers are up three, a little over three percent for our free students, a little over five and a half percent for our reduced. And we're down just a little bit on the pain, but overall, we're seeing, you know, some substantial growth here. And I think with sending our menu home, thank you so much for your support in that. For the month of November, we should continue to see growth.
Any questions? I don't see any.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, ladies.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you, ladies. Good job. So next, the John and Abigail Adams Scholars, we announce these annually. There were forty-two student seniors at Auburn High School who qualified for this. And the criteria is noted here. They need to attend a, a public. Language Arts and Math Test, they have to score advanced or proficient on one. So they have to score advanced on one, and the other one can be advanced or proficient. Then they also need to be in the top twenty-five percent of their graduating class. So with this, it actually pays the tuition for eight semesters at a state college or university. So the tuition at those colleges and universities is not tremendously high, but it's still a substantial support for these young men and women. So with your approval, I will read aloud the names of the forty-two students who were so recognized. We'll actually have, as we've done annually, a small breakfast for them on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving up at the high school. Excellent. Brianna Relane, Michaela Almeida, Samantha Anderson, Brianna Bailey, Samantha Benoit, Gina Benvenuti, Chris Broder, Erin Burke, John Champagne, one of our student reps, Caitlin Chesna, who was here earlier tonight, Kathryn Cudia, Bridget Darkangelo, Lauren Ferris, Emily Fokus, Alexander Fuller, Colin Galloway, Thomas Gannon, Thomas Gleason, Kelsey Guitar, Casey Guritz, Matthew Healy, we also recognized him earlier, Danielle Hurnley, Carolyn Jeffries, Abraham Kafaji, Jordan Levalle, Patrick Lovely, Sarah Lyons, Megan McQuary, Michael Mayo, George Matthew, Nicole Palmer, Emily Parish, Jessica Petro, Kristen Pike, Jessica Pittman, Victoria Richard, Emmeline Rivera, Ava Sargent, Taylor Smith, Rachel Stelmack, Nicholas Thomas, and Robert Walsh Jr. So congratulations to all of them for recognition well deserved. Next, we have the Chamber of Commerce Mini-Grant recipients. And as I do each year, I thank not only all of these individuals who took the time to write the grant and were awarded them, but also those many teachers who wrote one and their applications were not approved this time to encourage everyone to continue doing forward. Kathy Toby from Auburn High School, Sarah Cannell from Auburn Middle, Auburn Nicole Fitzpatrick, also from Auburn Middle School, two grants from Bryn Mawr School, written by Maria Garo and Jessica DiStefano, Julia Bancroft had one written by Anne Vannane. The Mary D. Stone School had three different grants. First one, written by Amanda Green, Gillian Hakens, Laura Walsh, and Mary Linden, the kindergarten team. One written by Principal Beth Chase, and one written by the first grade team along with the special educator, Allison Hill Sheree, Alyssa Kobel, Christine Jemay, Lisa Williams, and Donna Gates, and from the Pack-a-Chog School, Julie Fedella. So I congratulate them and also extend sincere thanks to the Chamber for their continued generosity. They do this annually and it really is a great, great thing. The, also included in your packets, Mrs. King did not note, but hopefully you saw it here, these are the lunch menus for the month of November for each of our schools in the varied opportunities, and also emphasizing the Breakfast to Go as well. Next is the annual, the NCLB report cards that actually have to be provided on an annual basis to each of the, to the parents regarding the district and school accountability. And what you see here is there is a district report, as well as the NCLB report card, as they're called, for each of the schools in the district. And as you can see, our students continue, as reported a couple of meetings ago, continue to fare well. And I congratulate and thank our teachers for their, for their work around that and support of it. The Outback Steakhouse, as you may have seen, they opened in their new location on Southbridge Street last Wednesday, October, a couple Wednesdays ago, October 22nd. And they, in communication with Mrs. Amy Sampson, one of our guidance councils at the high school, have agreed to offer two $1,250 scholarships to graduating seniors this coming graduation in the spring of 2015. And their hope is to be able to do this on an annual basis as well, to at least offer one. So it's very exciting and I think it's a great sign of businesses. There are so many. I think there was a total of eighty-eight thousand or somewhere in that vicinity that was given away last year in scholarships to our students, which is really remarkable and speaks to the commitment of the entire community in supporting our students. Wanted to make you aware that Dr. Lozey and I participated in a pilot regarding the Department of Educator Evaluation System. What it required was us to actually do a review, use a tool that had been created by a company, actually, that's working with DESI, and actually look at evaluations that had been conducted and rate the inter-rater reliability and how it was, the work that we had done in the district and did those, did the evaluations actually meet specific criteria. So as part of that, they have agreed to, our participation was, that we would get a $500 gift card to Amazon for our time. So I would ask that you accept that we have not yet received it, but they have assured me it is coming. So if you want to accept it in anticipation of its arrival, we can certainly put it to good use in the district.
I would entertain a motion to accept when it arrives. Do I have a motion?
I might make a motion to approve the donation of DESI, from DESI of $500 to thank Dr. Lozey and bring out their time completing the pilot survey regarding their educator evaluation.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Sir.
Any comments, questions, concerns, other than maybe it won't arrive? No?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Okay, great. So I will let you know when it arrives, for sure. Next, we have in here the Collaborative Quarterly Report that is provided, this one being from July 1st to September 30th. And the expectation is that you just vote to accept it and acknowledgement that it has been given to you. But things continue to move forward at the collaborative. I can tell you that the business manager recently accepted a position in Brookfield, Connecticut, actually, but we have hired, we just received notification from the executive director that a replacement has been hired. And I anticipate meeting, it's a gentleman, at the upcoming meeting and we'll report that back to you.
I would entertain a motion. Anyone? Thank you, Wayne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments?
I was just wondering through the chair, how many of our students actually take advantage of this? I, it probably varies from year to year, but I'm just wondering.
The collaborative program?
Yes.
This really is a program where we, as a district, would make a recommendation if we could not service a child's needs. I would have to look and see, but I believe right now we have either four or five students there. It does vary. We had a couple of years ago, many more. What we really try to do is utilize this program, that when students need additional supports, that they go there and then to work to bring them back to our district. In fact, we have one student who's in the process of that happening and should happen during the school year.
And is our cost to this per student, or?
It's a per student cost. And because we're a member of the collaborative, it's at a reduced rate as opposed to sending to a private setting. So there are a number of communities that participate in this. In the area, there are probably fifteen or sixteen or so communities. And because of this, it's at a reduced rate that our students who need it get the extra support.
Wonderful.
Yeah, it is.
So we have had some success with students returning?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. This year, I anticipate, we just had a meeting this morning, and one student is in the process of being brought back. In the years past, we have, we have absolutely done that. And the collaborative is great. It's really, just as Bay Path really is an extension of our educational program, so too is the collaborative for different purposes for students. So it's an ongoing communication with them, but, and I think once the student returns, we've got probably three students who will remain.
And who provides the transportation for the students?
We're required to provide it, but sometimes, actually, the collaborative has a transportation portion of their business. So they provide it for some of the students. In some districts, utilize them for other, other district placements. We're not currently doing that, but so there is a cost to connect to transportation. Yep. Next, just wanted to make you aware that annually, there is a Student Government Day that is held down at, down at the State House. And we've been notified that this day will be held, it will be the sixty-eighth annual one. It'll be held on Friday, April 10th. So I've shared this information with Mr. Handfield at the high school and also with Ms. LaBeau, who is the History Department Chair. And they are in the process of determining who will that be as well. And it's, they also select an alternate, both of whom get to go. So it's an exciting day for the students, so that is in progress. The Humanity Scholars Program, if you'll recall, I had shared with you back in the spring that I had assumed the role of executive director of that. And there are the districts of Auburn, Dougherty High, Grafton, Hope Dale, Milbury, Knipmuck, and Sutton that participate in this. And Mr. Jim Headland, who is a retired teacher from Milbury, actually leads this charge with Dr. Gail Nygrosch out of Worcester State University and a member of the Worcester Public Schools faculty. And the presentation was Partisanship in America, Then and Now, and very appropriate, I think, that we have with election tomorrow. I had our fill of ads and all this stuff, right? So I mean, exactly, you know, the phone calls and all that. So the, the topic was so timely, partisanship. And the way that it works is, and Dr. Nygrosch actually coordinates the speakers. So there were three professors who spoke to the group of students. There were probably, in total, I'm going to guess, eighty to a hundred students. And they each did a presentation for them with some historical significance and connecting it to, you know, history as a way of repeating itself. And then opened it for questions to the students. And there was a pretty lively debate back and forth. And I will tell you, our Auburn students very much held their own. And then, and that was their first one this year. Then they broke up into smaller groups and each of the teachers, actually, most of the teachers did combined groups. And they had discussions about questions. They talked about two of the ballot referendum questions, questions two and three, and they had discussions around that. And then Ashley talked about some of the things that they had heard about partisanship. So it was great. They stay and have lunch, and then they're also able to take a tour of the campus if they're interested in potentially going there. So there were a couple of our students who weren't able to attend this first one due to other commitments, but with your approval, I just want to recognize them. First, to thank Mr. Pat Dufour. He's an English teacher at our high school. He has been the coordinator of this program for a number of years. But also, student representatives Shannon Hines, Albert Smirchak, Sarah Kendrick, Riley Simmons, Alex Malarski, Yaopaku, Carla Kahale, Jacob McPherson, Ryan Williams, Mark Wright, Katie Rizzoli, and Rashani Patel. And as I said, they really did a nice job representing us, so you should be very proud. There are three other events that will take place. I know we'll go to Clark University one day, we end at Worcester State, and I'm forgetting the third, maybe Assumption, I think is the other college we will attend, but well done. Very happy to report that the coordinated program review, if you remember, as part of that, they sometimes have items that they say are not yet fully implemented. This document here says that we don't need to submit any more mid-cycle updates, that the entire plan has been approved. And that's in large part, this past spring or this past budget cycle, you approved the addition of some English language learner tutor support. And with that, we are fully implemented as it notes on the pack. So I offer congratulations to Dr. Lozey for that, as well as her entire ELL team doing a nice job. The Early Literacy Expert Panel, that is a statewide board that I have been serving on. And I don't know that it made it into the packet, so we will email it to you. But this was a one-page document, a two-page document, I should say, that was presented to the Board of Education recently about the goal of really supporting our students at the very youngest of age to develop those literacy skills that are going to support them throughout their lives and their educational careers. So we've had a meeting since, we've made a few tweaks to it, but we will email that to you tomorrow, so that way you will have it. But it's, it's a great committee. It's headed by Secretary of Education Matt Malone and also Dr. Noni Lasso, Noni Lasso out of Harvard University. So it's an exciting group to be a part of. This next policy, I actually am including it for you, as I noted in here, as we move toward the merger at 10 Swanson Road, that is what we call it. I don't know that that will be its official name. I feel like it will, it's kind of becoming its official name. But wanted to share this with you, really more for you to take a look at and see if there was, if you're comfortable with the policy as it is. I know that when we met last February and April and then in June, when we met with the teachers of JV and PAC, we had discussions around, you know, what it would be named. And there was agreement around the fact that we should open it up to students to have them play a part in that as well. But, so I leave this for you and it's up to you, Mr. Chair and the committee, whether you want to have it come back in an upcoming meeting for further discussion or any recommendations, or to leave it standing as is. So I look to you for direction.
Any comments, concerns, ideas?
Through the chair. I had looked through this while we got it ahead of time, and it seemed to me it was a fairly comprehensive policy. I didn't, I don't really see anything that needs to be changed unless I missed something, but it seemed kind of clear to me that this would work.
Any, did any other members see anything that you took issue with? No? I didn't.
Okay, good.
Was there something that?
No, no, not at all. I don't.
You would like to turn it over?
No, I actually think, you know, this really is a guide. I had shared this with the administrators and the teachers in very general terms. But then what we'll do is I'll work with Dr. Lozey, Mrs. Kozic, and Mrs. Lopez, and we'll come up with getting this out to students and collecting some reports. I think that, you know, in terms of a timeline, I think it would be great if by, you know, late winter, early spring, we had a name for this. But obviously, there needs to be a process. So, and I'm, I'm sure there'll be some very worth, very appropriate names that will come forward. Some exciting ones, too. But I'm sure there will be some, I will, actually, I've heard a few that have been floating around there, that, that seem quite good, so.
When the time comes, I'm more than willing to work on that committee, subcommittee, too.
Okay.
Great. So we now move on to unfinished business.
I did include for you a copy of the educator plan that I provided at the last meeting, and I would be happy to answer any questions or address any concerns that you may have.
Do we have any questions, concerns, comments? Everyone approves? Nothing down the center table?
Okay. The MSBA Accelerated Repair Program, we do continue to move forward in this. And as you know, town meeting generously, unanimously supported all of the transfers in CIP to allow this to happen. The next step is, and as you know, SCANSCA was randomly selected by MSBA to be our OPM, the owner's project manager. And the next part is to sign a contract with the architects. And again, MSBA selected them randomly, and it's Deets and Company. And the contract value is $50,450, up to that value. And as previously reported to you, those, actually, these funds can be paid from the CIP monies that were approved because it's part of the design work. So I'm seeking your approval for the execution of this contract. It will actually be Town Manager Jacobson who will sign off on this project as required by MSBA. But do seek your approval for us to move forward in this process.
I would entertain a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Great. Thank you.
We now move on to new business.
The next item, you may be aware that Mrs. Darlene Coyle, with the leave from Mr. Bernie from the department, she is serving in an interim capacity. She recently met with Mr. Fahy and did a walkthrough of the high school in case they need to do any dispensing of anything at site location. This actually is the exact document that you approved back in 2010 when Mr. Pelletier was here, but we've updated the name. And as you'll note on here, it really just stipulates, clarifies an understanding of who will be responsible for what. And it does note on the backside that one, if any funds are received and if there are any costs borne by us, that, you know, whether it's FEMA money, MEMA monies that may come in, that we would be able to be reimbursed for any charges. in, that we would be able to be reimbursed for any charges, should they be incurred. So, with your approval, I would then get this signed with Ms. Coyle and myself.
Sounds good to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this votes.
And then also, just want to, under upcoming events, let you know or remind you that Nash, on November, is Family Literacy Month. I mentioned it in my most recent Rockets review. Each of the elementary schools have literacy events that are taking place, starting with tomorrow night. Bryn Mawr School will have their event, and each one thereafter. There will be no school next Tuesday due to the Veterans Day holiday recognition of that, and that all of us will be heading to Hyannis for the MAS C, MAS S conference, so which promises to be excellent. And then next, when we return, next Wednesday and Thursday will be the first presentations about the budget.
Oh, boy.
Any comments? Nothing? Are we all excited to get to the cake?
It's going to be bonding.
I will be running a little bit late, turns out that I have to work a good part of Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
Something came up, there was a funeral, and I said I would stay behind.
Yep.
So, I will see you after that.
Great.
We now move on to business and financial. Mr. Barber?
Good evening, everybody. The first item that is in front of you is a year-to-date budget report. This report was actually run as of Friday of last week. As you go through, you'll be able to see and identify all of the expenses that we basically incurred so far, year-to-date for the current fiscal year. If you go through the available budget on certain items, you'll see that there are certain credit items. Those items are going to be items that you'll see in a couple of seconds that will be requiring or requesting transfers to be done to allow for a redistribution of the budget of the current fiscal year to account for those deficit amounts currently. With that being the case, that's your first document. Anybody have any questions on the year-to-date budget report? No? Okay. With that being said, like I mentioned, the transfers that are going to take place are all ones that occur within the same series. Since they agree with the same series, there's no approval necessary upon making those transfers because they're all valid budget transfers to redistribute them back in. Any questions on budget transfers or the reallocation of those monies? No questions? Okay, great. The third item there is the Pro-K update. As we've stated each month, we compile all of the information that goes through the Construction Committee on a monthly basis, as far as the eligible expenses that were deemed to be paid for by the district. The current fiscal month that had just completed for October, I had submitted the approved expenditures were approximately $2.5, $2,543,082. And as you can see on the report here, that was actually our twenty-second payment request that we've submitted to the MSBA. Up until that one, that's the only one that's currently outstanding. All of the other requests that have been submitted have already been received, and obviously deposited back to the town. So, we've actually been able to modify our processing as far as submissions, and now we're kind of on a nice rotation that we're able to get those funds back in relatively quick turnaround time. But as you can see, that's the one current outstanding in balance that we're looking to hopefully have. I am waiting for one signature left, and then, once that signature comes in from our CFO from the town side, we'll be able to submit that request for the reimbursement.
Good.
Do you have any questions on that?
No. I have a question.
Sure, please.
As far as signing off on payment, beyond the Owners Project Manager, do you and Mr. Fahy check out the work periodically as far as what's been done? Obviously, that's not your field of expertise, but how often does, does Joe get to go out there and look around at what's being done?
I believe Joe actually makes relatively, relatively scheduled trips, especially for certain parts of the project. I know that there are certain members of the Construction Committee that we meet with on a weekly basis as well, and there's certain items that come up regarding the construction phases. Dr. Bruno can kind of validate some of the information. Certain items that come up during our weekly meetings that are, I guess, identified as far as being questions or problems or things of that nature, usually Joe would be one of those individuals, and Mr. Fahy would be one of the individuals that would have a better hand on doing a review or a visual, especially with his abilities of knowing more about that type of work and service.
Yep.
I could be happy to ask him a couple of questions if you like, and be able to bring some information back to you for our next school committee meeting if you wish.
Nothing specific?
Through the chair. It's actually, it's a two-tiered process. So, they have Mr. Hind, who is hired from SCANSCA, who is out here, and that's his responsibility to be out in the field and checking everything on a daily basis and providing daily reports to all of us. But then SCANSCA puts in their report, but then Lamo Pagano also has to review and approve anything that they're putting through. So, there are checks and balances along the way.
I just, I just like the idea of having, having a member of our team kind of looking, looking over things.
Sure, yep.
I know, in my, in my own experience, I've seen where sometimes the, the Owners Project Manager and the Architects are not all on the same page with the contractor, or too much on the same page, and some things could slide. And if we have, and I'm not saying that I distrust any of them, but if we have one of our people in there, you know, on a regular basis, not only is there a better opportunity of us finding a problem, but also of keeping them on their toes.
Yeah, through the chair, I, I agree with you, and, and the project does continue to go well, and I do want to offer to any of you, all of you, we'll do a tour a week from Thursday on the thirteenth. There'll be one at three-thirty, and then one at five, and the one at five should end by six o'clock, and then we'll come in for budget presentations, so.
Through the chair, I just have one other response. My answer is also more on the entire project part, rather than more just specifically towards the invoices.
Yeah.
And I know we do have different individuals that are part of the requirements as far as signing off and so forth, validating our submission. In addition to that, though, we do have both myself, as well as our CFO for the town, that also takes an ability of looking through all of those invoices on a regular basis. We also have the ability to, and we have in the past, identify expenses that maybe have not been submitted through the Construction Committee. And so, at that particular point in time, when there has been an invoice or two as well that have been an eligible expense that maybe has been missed as far as the Construction Committee meetings, we then bring that to the attention of the, the Construction Committee to get that approved as well. So, we do take some additional internal steps and measures to make sure we're, you know, being accountable, and almost a slight version of internal audit, I guess you could say, takes place occasionally, but we can obviously spend a lot more time taking a look at that as well.
Excellent. I think that's all I have. Any other questions? No? Okay.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. All right, we now move on to policies.
Included in your packet is an updated policy, ADDA, Background Checks. And as you note in here, these came directly from MAS C, from your organization, and they found that there were some concerns, some duplication, and some lack of clarity. So, it is their recommendation, and mine as well, that you approve this updated policy as recommended by MAS C.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second possible? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote. And we do need to go into executive session.
We do.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion. I make the motion to enter executive session for MGL Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One A, two, to discuss strategy with respect to contract negotiations with union personnel.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Ms. Sutton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hallway?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie?
Yes.
I'm just going to run and get those documents.